Good evening, Board. I would like to call to order our regular work session meeting. Here on May twenty-third, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody here. The microphone is working good tonight. We do have everybody present, so that's a good thing. Again, we'd just like to make a reminder that we are meeting at five o'clock PM tonight because there is a Pops concert following this that much of the Board needs to participate with, and that tomorrow there is an election, so that canceled tomorrow. So that's the rationale for the change in time tonight. We'll start with number three for the approval of the agenda. We'll hear a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any revisions to be needed? Any changes, corrections? For number twelve, we're gonna have something under other business?
Yeah. Friendly amendments to the motion.
Okay. Okay. We'd like to hear then, Joel, properly, a change on number twelve, just a friendly amendment for, we'll discuss the solar project for number twelve under other.
You bet.
Okay. Any other changes or hears or missions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Number four, approve the project application and project certification for payment action. This is for the CTE and the elementary. Two thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars thirty-two cents and LTFM of thirty-five hundred ninety-seven and ninety-seven cents. Total six thousand four hundred sixty and twenty-nine cents. The receipts and the expenditures are displayed overhead. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Any items to share for that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Number five, approval of the contract with Palmer Bus Service. This will be effective July first of this year, two thousand twenty-two. We can entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or chatting on that that we'd like to?
We have Chris Champlin's here also, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak about this. And the buildings ground, or the Transportation Committee did meet with Mr. Champlin.
Just gotta know the technology here. Thank you for having me tonight. It's been a great partnership with Palmer Bus Service and Wyndham Public Schools. I can't remember, this is our third contract, I wanna say, that we've, we've come together and negotiated. And it's been, like I say, a great working relationship, and I guess I'm just coming tonight to say thank you for partnering with us and working through the contract this year with the Transportation Committee. I think we all came out in a good spot and, you know, nobody really knows what our prices are gonna do here, but I think we got something that we both could live with and, and work through. But if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any, or...
Thank you for coming down, Chris. We do appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, there have been some costs and changes, as you know, and we appreciate that, that you explained that. It's common knowledge that the cost of fuel has gone up significantly, and that's a large portion of busing students is filling the fuel. And of course, we know that the labor rates has gone up. Chris, you also mentioned that the cost of a new bus is up about twenty to twenty-five percent. Is that correct?
Should've just stayed up here, sorry. Yeah, you know, we, here in the last couple of months, so we had ordered buses, and I think I told the Transportation Committee, we had ordered buses back in February, and we were notified here in the first part of May that unfortunately, the Bluebird Manufacturing was not gonna honor those prices that we previously agreed to back in February. And, and yes, they're passing on about a twenty percent price increase to those buses. So in some of the prices, we did ask for a bit more in here. One of the contract is to help trying to offset some of those costs that, that we know we're gonna see, and just the changes we've seen just here within the last year. So again, asking for a little bit more in year one. And years two through four, I think we came to a good consensus on some increases based upon the state aid increase, so.
Thank you. Chris, would you also... Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Chris, could you tell the audience here and the Board about the new cameras?
Yeah, so this past year, the state of Minnesota had an opportunity to put in a grant request to put video cameras on school buses, which would include an outside camera on the bus for stop arms. And Palmer Bus Service was successful in getting a grant from the state to outfit all the school buses that we have here with stop arm cameras. My grant paperwork actually got signed by the state of Minnesota today. So now I, now I'm at liberty to go ahead and order those, that, that equipment. And we've got an installer lined up to come in and, and take care of that. So that'll be something that we'll be working on probably in the next couple of months here, and be up and ready to go for, for next fall. So all the school buses will have the equipment on it. There'll be a public information campaign that'll come along with that. So again, so we can get the word out to the public again, please stop for the bus when, when those lights are flashing, so.
Joe, thank you for bringing that up. Another thing too is some more technology on the buses that will be hopefully coming down the line in the future too. So I know you'd mentioned that is built into this cost increase as well. So whatever you'd like to say to that, I know you can't expect it to happen right now, but it is something that you're working on.
Yeah, that is, that is true. We are working on some additional technology that we wanted to bring to the district. That is computerized routing software. Within that is an application that parents can get on their phones to see where the bus is in relation to, in relationship to their bus stop. It's called Stop Finder. So all our buses will have GPS equipment on them. And it'll take us probably about six months to get the equipment up and running and everything, you know, synced with the routes and that. But hopefully, that'll be something we can launch somewhere around the first of the year, where our parents could see again where the bus is in relationship to their bus stop, so.
And Chris, I must say that I enjoyed the, the committee meetings. You have a great rapport. And, you know, public relations is wonderful, and you should be recommended for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Chris or Palmer Bus Service?
I'll just note that year two, three, and four is tied to whatever the state gives us on how much his increase is tied to. So he's going to do as well or as poorly as the state does for the school district. So that way, we're linked together on that moving forward. So that's what we did after using the increase that we need to make sure it's sustainable in year one, and then making sure that we're tied to state increases in year two, three, four.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you. Well seen, as we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion and with Palmer Bus Service is passed. Thank you. Thank you for coming down, Chris, and driving from Mankato. We appreciate that. Number six, approve the resignation of Jeremy O'Donnell, the head football coach, physical education teacher, effective at the end of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-two school year. Motion on that, please?
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Barb. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Number seven, approve the resignation of Nikki O'Donnell, elementary Title One Intervention Teacher, effective at the end of the twenty-one to twenty-two school year. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Joseph. Questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Number eight, approve the resignation of Sarah Mortwett, second grade teacher, effective at the end of the twenty-one to the twenty-two school year. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Barb. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Number nine, approve hiring Rebecca Hacker as a fifth grade teacher for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three school year. Entertain a motion? Motion by Don, second by Angie. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Number ten, approve hiring Misty Rebel as middle school, high school assistant principal for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year. Entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Joseph, second by Bruce. Questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Number eleven, this is the presentation, this is an informational piece, a presentation on the two thousand twenty-four Spanish trip. Ask for a presenter to come forward if they would like at this time, and speak to that, please. Good evening. It's nice to have you with us.
Thank you. Same with me. Thank you, everyone, for your time. So with this potential Spanish learning trip in twenty twenty-four...
Elsa, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. My name is Elsa Mendoza. I'm the Spanish teacher here in Wyndham, the only Spanish teacher. With this trip that I have in mind, first, I wanna start off with saying how I have gone to Costa Rica myself. I actually studied abroad there for six weeks, so I do know somewhat of Costa Rica. I do have a community trip planned for twenty twenty-three, so next year. And then, in fact, next month, I will be going to Ecuador to study and get to know another Spanish-speaking country. So really, I've had a lot of great experiences traveling abroad, and I just feel like I want to promote that to students and give them the opportunity as well. With this trip, if we can... Here is more about Explorica, so everything I am doing with working along with Explorica, which is a really common student, student program to travel abroad. It's common as the EF that some of you might have heard of, but it's a trustworthy company to work with. So there you just see some information about Explorica. The benefits, so I think along with those benefits, I can also say that I have benefited immensely. I don't think I would ever be in this position had I not traveled. My ideal plan was to teach elementary education, but I'm in Spanish. So I think I'm very open-minded to just trying out new things. So this would be a great opportunity for students as well. Eligibility, so my plan is only eleventh and twelfth graders, so the classes of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And they have to take both Spanish and two, just because that is currently what Wyndham offers, and then we do have a heritage. So a student in good standing academically and with behaviors, and my max would be twenty students. So here is the cost. As you can see on the top right, the itinerary, there's an example. I was not able to get an exact example for the potential trip, just because I, Explorica's very flexible. So they really wait until departure date to really tell me the ins and the outs of the trip. But I do have an example there. Registration is just simply going to my website, which is a part of the Explorica Company, and it just gives a step-by-step on how to have a student register. The contract, I spoke to Mr. Joyce, following along the same lines of the DC trip. Four chaperones is what I plan, not including myself. So not including myself, that would be a one-to-five ratio. So it's five students, one chaperone per five students. The cost, two thousand seven hundred sixty-two, that would be before any grants. And I, I mentioned the including forty dollars. So there's an activity that I think students would benefit. It's called a folklore evening, to where that includes Costa Rican culture, Costa Rican food, Costa Rican dance and music. So really, it's on our last night, a good way to say it was a great experience to be here. In addition to that, there is a two hundred dollar discount if students are enrolled in May. So upon school board approval, and really, this discount is just for the benefit of the student and the parent. Ultimately, I wanna try and make it as affordable as possible. The first payment, in order to enroll, would be fifty dollars. That would be if the student signs up for debit or checking account. And you can see as the payments would be one hundred ten eighty-seven for either ten to twelve months. It's really dependent on if the parent signs up for debit, payment plans, or savings and checkings payment plan. And again, that is if a student is enrolled in the month of May. Now...
Elsa, does that mean this month of May?
Yes. Which, if it's not possible, I did talk to my program consultant, and they'll work around. They, they, they want to also give the opportunity to students, like they're working hand in hand with me.
So that discount could be pushed off to June if the Board approved June or...
Exactly. Yep. So if it's not approved today, that's why, upon school board approval. Ultimately, they are wanting to make this also an opportunity for students as well. And I did mention it to them, this would be... It's been more than twenty years that this trip has been done, a Spanish trip. So I really think that the company is, is trying to see the, the effort that I'm trying to do to, to make this possible back in Wyndham. June fifteenth and August fifteenth, that is what my program consultant has shared with me, that there is a trip cost increase, and that also is, it has to do with airfare and excursion fees. What's included in the cost, so here it's laid out, I mean, the, the air flight, the airfare is included, all transportation. So to get to Costa Rica, it is airplane, but within Costa Rica, we are on a coach bus. Accommodations, we would be there for eight overnights. We would be staying in a hotel. They do have private bathrooms, and it's either three students to four students. And these hotels are, have a good reputation. The company's not gonna want us to go somewhere where it's unsafe for us. There is also breakfast and lunch daily included, with exception to the first day, because we would be arriving late in the evening. And then the meals, I know it could be a problematic situation if they were only to give Costa Rican food. Not everyone likes all the foods. So they told me they would be rotating it, just to make it fair and everyone get something new, different, different. Entrance fees, so it also is included, so students would not have to pay me anything or pay the company anything once there. Everything's already covered for. We always have a tour director with us. In fact, they meet us at the airport, and they leave us at the airport. So we're always with a tour director. We're never alone, and that tour director is a local person. So sometimes they're even trilinguals, but for sure, they would know English and Spanish. And that is a huge benefit, because then students are aware that even though they are talking in English, you know, everyone's gonna understand, because we share that language. Ultimately, I would like them to talk in Spanish too, 'cause I want them to be practicing their skills in Spanish. There is a tour diary, so that's where I would share, what are we doing every day, just so that I can share with parents, because I'm sure they're gonna wanna know, what is my child doing? What, what are they up to? And what I really like about Explorica is that twenty-four emergency service. So I was told that in any situation or any question that I have, I always have that service. So there's that tour director, but if my tour director is not necessarily answering my questions, or I'm not feeling like they're answering my questions, I would just contact this, this phone number. Not necessarily an emergency, but just so that they can immediately give me my answers to my questions. The flight hotel information, again, because it would be a two-year planning for this trip, the flight information and hotel information wouldn't be given quite yet. It'd be closer to the, to the departure date. Travel protection plan, so I think this is an important one. I am requiring it for students. It's eighteen dollars a day with a total of one hundred sixty-two, and really, this is medical expenses. So I really want a student to go, but also know that, let's say, the month before, they're not able to travel for X reason, that they get refunded. It wouldn't be necessarily a hundred percent, but I did get myself informed, up to thirty days before the departure, it's seventy-five percent refunded. So that, I think, would really help parents have an alleviation of what if things change? Can I back out? Here's the COVID nineteen policy. So this is as of January first of this year. Explorica has said all travelers, including myself and tour directors, the person who would meet us up in Costa Rica at the airport, need to be vaccinated. And this is just really a protocol so that all students can be safe, because that is our number one priority for myself and for them. Here, I included what would it be for passport, because majority of the students would need to apply for a first-time passport or renew it. So I just have the link, including what information they need in order to either apply or renew a passport. I have the Wyndham Auditor Treasure. They could do it here, the application, which would be the most closest in location. Passport pictures, up to fifteen dollars. We have one in Wyndham, so really, students aren't needing to go out of town. They can just stay in town to get those requirements. Here, I have a breakdown, so that you guys can truly see what is the total trip cost if a student needs a passport or a renewal versus what if they don't? And it, sorry, in, in the back, this is me assuming that the student or the parent only wants a passport book, because with passports, there's a passport book and the passport card. So this is just assuming they just want the book. Here, I have also gotten myself informed, so World Strides is from Explorica. There is a financial assistance program. I actually spoke to one of the representatives, and I gave them an estimate. What if there's a parent example that only earns a thousand dollars? Or only receives a thousand dollars for their tax, their tax return? They said that the student would be given financial assistance of, up to four hundred dollars. So ultimately, they're not gonna be, they're not covering the whole price trip, but they are helping. This would be available for any student. In fact, I would say I would hand it to every student. Whether they want to fill it out or not, is completely confidential and up to them and their parent. Here, this is a smart traveler enrollment program, and this, I will be honest, I had no idea about it, but because of my trip to Ecuador, I've kind of learned the ropes of traveling and traveling safely. So this would just be something to where parents would get a notification of, is it safe? Is it not safe to go? If it's not safe to go, we're not going. And that's another part too. If, if anything were to arise in Costa Rica, and it would be on do not travel, we would get refunded the money, because that is nothing in our control. We would get refunded. So either we get refunded for the whole money, or we choose a different trip for a different time. So I think here, it would be more changing the trip, but also, it would depend on the student as well, and the parent. So this is just enrollment program. It's free. It's just so that the parent can know that it's a safe place to go. Here are some reasons of the purpose of the learning trip. Ultimately, I want students to learn. My idea is, yes, we'll be doing activities that would be included in a vacation, absolutely, but there's gonna be so much more into it as to learning new Spanish skills that maybe in the... But there's gonna be so much more into it as to learning, um, new Spanish skills that maybe in the classroom, we don't necessarily have that opportunity. Exposure to the Spanish. Everything in Costa Rica is in Spanish, but also in English. So I think that'll be a, a good cultural shock for students to see. Oh, it's also in English. It's just not in Spanish. Um, ultimately as well, learning different cultures. I think I can e- express with them what I've learned, what I've gained. But if they can't live it, they're not really gonna understand it a hundred percent. And I did include, um, journaling. I've done that. When I went to Costa Rica, I journaled. So everything I thought was important, which. I thought many things were important, but I'm like, oh, I'm gonna jot it down because now I have my journal. I would write it down and I do look back at it and I reflect on, oh, this is what I learned. And that's another thing too. I, including my heritage students, which many of them are Spanish speakers. One might think, well, what do they have to learn if they know Spanish? I went and I had so much to learn that I didn't necessarily get exposed because my parents. Are either Mex- my mom's Mexican, my dad's Guatemalan. So it's a different culture. And ultimately, if you know Spanish, that doesn't mean you can't learn anything new. So heritage students would still be learning something new. Of course, Spanish one and Spanish two would be learning even more.
For a sec?
Yes.
Uh, Heritage class is a class that we offer and it's aimed more so at our. Students that already have a firm grasp of the Spanish language because they are native of a country potentially that. Speaks the Spanish language. So Spanish one is far below their abilities. Spanish two is below their abilities. Heritage gets into language development from grammar, but also. Learning about the cultures that the students bring because one Spanish speaker from, you know. Ecuador might be different than the culture from a student from Mexico. So. We developed a class called Heritage a couple of years ago to have those students who already had a grasp of the Spanish language. Gain further understanding of their culture, but also, you know, the, the formal language. So that's the Heritage class that Ms. Mendoza is speaking about.
So the journaling would be something that I would require students to do. Every night we would meet up and journal, just a reflection of what was learned. Um, here are objectives. I do wanna make it very clear to students that again, it's not a vacation. Um, it is a learning trip and there will be things that we'll be needing to learn prior to departure. So. I have planned for ten meetings, whether they're held before or after school. Um, students will always get handouts of these meetings. I, I would highly recommend that students attend. Um. But I know that students are also in, in sports and, and other, um, activities. So. Like the meeting number one, participants get to know each other. It, it is gonna be ten, eh, eleven through twelfth graders and not necessarily. All in Spanish one, all in Spanish two. It's gonna be Spanish one, Spanish two, Heritage. So they're not necessarily gonna know all. Um, all of them. So that's why I think it's important to get to know each other so that not only can they. Uh, be aware of their safety, but also being on a lookout for everyone on the trip. Um, here is an example of scheduled meetings. No, you're fine. So this is an example of what I have scheduled for my twenty twenty-three community trip. Um, some of you might have already seen it on WhatsApp and Facebook. Some of you may have not, but I am leading one, um. One community trip to Costa Rica, same itinerary, exact same. So really I'm gonna get a lot of insights to that. Yes, I have traveled on my own, but this would be, I am traveling, um, with an itinerary already scheduled. Oh, okay, that's okay. Um, so that, that schedule just showed on these dates, we will be talking about this. This is our Mina place. Please be there. So an example would be, we're gonna discuss, have you gotten your passport? Um, I'm also gonna require students to either give me a copy of their passport or I make a copy. When I went to Costa Rica, it was highly recommended that you never carried your passport. It was always a printed copy. Um, and now with COVID, of course, I went before COVID, now also having a printout of their COVID, um, vaccine. So really it's just me having the information needed if a, um, situation were to arise. Day one, uh, Minneapolis to Costa Rica. So. Students would need to have their transportation or we would leave Wyndham together, carpooling. Um, there, there is some dilemmas with that. I mean. I, I, I know that when I were, were ever to travel, my parents wanted to be the ones to take me. Um, so I totally understand that with parents. So that's why I'm leaving it almost as. Is the parent gonna take them or can we go all together in a group? Going to Minneapolis, uh, it, it really depends on traffic. So I wouldn't want any student to miss this opportunity just because of traffic. Um, the flight typically lasts seven to nine hours with a one stop. When we arrive to San Jose, which is the capital of Costa Rica, that's where we would meet up with our tour director. I've, I've already been shared that. Um, our tour director would hold up an Explorica sign and that is our key of who we need to go with. Um, but I would be in communication as we land, um, immediately so that I am aware of. Where are they situated? Where do I need to go? And I think it's really beneficial already having experience going to that country. Especially at an airport, because in airport, it, it can be really, um, it can be really tricky if you don't know an airport. Day two, um, again, so we are moving around in San Jose. Or I mean, around in Costa Rica. We never leave the country. It's just focused on Costa Rica, but we do move around in the provinces. So the day two would be travel to Aranal, which is a volcano national park. Here they would learn about. Um, the volcano and just really the, um, the nature of it. And it's three hours from where we would start off the capital to, um, a new city. Day three, Aranal landmarks. So we would have a kayaking tour, a hanging bridges excursion and a hot springs visit. Any activity that a student does not wanna do is not forced to do. So I think that is also important. Um, not everyone is gonna be willing to get on a kayak, which is totally understandable. Um, really that's just to experience. The volcano a little bit closer. Hanging bridges, bridges excursion, that is learning more about the wildlife of Costa Rica and its animals. Um, and then hot springs visit, that's just a cool way to relax. And, um, it's thermal, thermal pools due to the volcano. Day four, Aranal to Monte Verde, again, a different, um, province. Here we would travel and just really get to explore the nature of Costa Rica, um, which would be horseback riding. And, and once again, if a student doesn't. Feel comfortable doing that, that is totally understandable. Um, we would visit a local school and, and I really, if this trip does get approved, I would really want this to occur. I think that it's. What I have planned in the itinerary is important, but I think this one would be my most important one, just because this one will get. Students the opportunity to really reflect on what is my education? What, what opportunities do I have versus what opportunities are there in a different country? Um, so I really hope that. COVID protocols, they, they allow us to be there. Um, school at that time, school ends, um, end July. So we would have still some, some time before school ends back in Costa Rica. Monte Verde landmark. So we would still be in Monte Verde. Here is a canopy zip line tour. The waiver is given at the, uh, the day of the activity. Again, if a student doesn't want to, is afraid of heights, they don't have to. Um, then we do go to a biological reserve visit where we get to really learn. Um, even deeper about what, what is there in Costa Rica in regards to nature, animals, wildlife. And we would be planting our own tree. In fact, um, there's a story behind that, how, um. A girl once went there and instead of having to kill these trees, why don't these visitors come and plant trees? So that they help out the world. Um, so I just think that would be a really, a really cool thing to give back in a way. Day six, Monte Verde to Costa Punta Arenas. Um, this is the coast. So the beach, the beach part. Um, approximately four hours from where we were previously at Monte Verde. This is a free time at the beach and I did ask, what, what safety guidelines do you guys have at the beach? And they told me that we always go to a beach where there's a lifeguard. Um, once again, their priority is the student's safety. Day seven, Manuel Antonio excursion. Um, I myself have been here. It's called the Whale's Tail Beach. As you guys can probably see, it looks like a whale's tail. Um, this park is phenomenal. Um. I have shared with, I always share with students my experiences and I think this one always like, oh, really? And I tell them from here to probably, um, Don. Is that, is that how you say your name? I wouldn't wanna say incorrect. Um, there's another beach. So really students get to choose. Do you wanna go to this beach or the other beach? And there's a waveless beach and then there's a wave beach. So it's just a phenomenal beach to go to. Um, but before we get that or free time at the beach, we do have a guided tour. So they really give us the ins and the outs of what is this national park? What does it have? And then, um, from there, we would go back to San Jose, so back to where the ca- uh, the capital and the airport are at. And we would visit Sachi, um, which is a craft village. So this is the place where students would learn about. Um, symbolic items or symbolic, um, cultural things about Costa Rica. The cart that you guys can see there, it's very symbolic. It's, it's just their ox cart. Ox carts are very symbolic in Costa Rica. Here is where students would be, would have the opportunity to buy their, their souvenirs that I know. They would love to, to get that opportunity for. And here is where I mentioned the folklore evening. As you guys can see on the picture at the bottom, number two. Costa Rican dance. And I think this is, this is more of the arts. We learn about the arts of Costa Rica as well. Forty dollars is included in the trip cost. So to do this activity, it's an additional forty dollars. Which I already included. Um, and then our day nine, which is our flight back home, approximately eight hours. Again, one stop, we arrive to. Minneapolis Airport. Um, and I would think if students got, got to the airport a certain way, that's the way you get back home. Um, just to make it consistent. Um, but if a student does need to go with someone else, then how they went to the airport differently. Um, apparent note, so everything I feel that a parent would have to tell me before we depart, just so that we can all be on the same page. And I think that.
Questions from the board?
I do have questions, ma'am, okay? Is, first of all, is it an American company as far as planning the trip?
It's an American company. Yep.
And, uh, is the liability for the district? Is there any liability if someone gets hurt or?
The company has the liability.
Completely.
The company has the liability completely.
As a board, we okay it.
Go, uh, two things, Joe, I'm gonna clarify that, cuz she's right that the, uh, insurance, the, uh, company will have a liability policy.
Yep.
But we as a school district also for travel of our students that are approved trip by the board, we carry liability on that too.
Okay.
If something unfortunate were to happen, um, everybody is going to be, have to deal with that. We won't, we won't be able to waive our, our responsibility.
Yeah.
So between now and then, we'd have to probably look at a rider for out of country travel as an item. I, we might already be covered. We just have to just clarify that, which is not that big a deal for us to clarify, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I have some more questions too. Um, is the country now peaceful or is there political upheaval there?
No, it is peaceful. Um, I went there two thousand nineteen. I can't really speak for. My experience going there now because I'm not, but I am going next year. So really, if I don't see it being peaceful, then I'm not gonna wanna take my students there.
Now, the trip is gonna be next year, July?
No, twenty twenty-four July, in July twenty twenty-four. My community trip is twenty twenty-three. Yeah.
All right, um, yeah, I'm concerned about the safety because.
Yeah.
International scene today is, there's a lot of upheaval, especially in, uh, South America.
Yes, absolutely. Um, Costa Rica, that's why I think that my community trip is really gonna let me know how are things now with. With what we have gone through the pandemic. So it would, it would be a good insight for me.
And passports. I had the experience that it takes many months, but of course you, you have touch, you have time now, but I mean, you know, it's kind of, you don't get it overnight.
Yep, that, that's something to, to think about. And that was one of the schedules and I think it did show up actually, Peggy. I'm sorry to, to bring you back. Um.
Okay.
One of the schedules, eh, eh, the passport, that, that is an issue. And my idea was, um. To have the Spanish class trip in twenty twenty-three next year, but because of the passport, like you said, it takes a long time. I don't want students to have to risk that. Hey, I've signed up, but my passport hasn't arrived. Um, so as you can see, this is, this is my scheduled meetings for my community trip. And I tell them from July to January, which gives us plenty of time. January is your last month that you should be applying for a passport. So I have looked up online, how, approximately how much is it taking? But also I experienced it with, um. My younger siblings, they applied in June, they didn't get in until October of last year. So I do wanna plan for plenty of time, like you say, cuz that is, that is something to worry about.
Also, suppose a student breaks his leg or something a week before and can't go, what kind, what percentage back do they get for the trip?
Um, a week before, I, I know it would not be zero percent, but I know it would also not be seventy-five percent. Because that would be less than the thirty days. So that is something that I could get myself informed for any, anything that were to happen prior. But if they have that travel protection plan, that, that assures them that they're not gonna lose all of their money.
Plus they break a leg a week before, right?
Eh, no, not necessarily that either. They still have to gain because they're paying for that protection plan. Yep. There is another protection plan that I didn't include. Um, ultimately, I want the best protection for students. Eh, I know they might choose the, the cheaper version, um, which would only cover medical expenses, but this one was. Up to thirty days prior to the departure, you can get refunded seventy-five percent.
When I went to Italy, I had to buy a insurance policy in case I kicked the bucket over there. And they, uh, had to get me back.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it cost me about five hundred dollars, but, uh, I have it for the lifetime now, no matter where I go.
Then I think that's a deal.
Even the board, even at board, I, I get, you know, I'll get.
Where can I send you, Joe? Joe, where am I sending you?
It, it is important to have that, that medical insurance, because you never know what, what can happen. Whether you're safe. I mean, you can follow the rules and that's something that I would really stress out with students. I, I need you to follow the rules and as long as we follow the rules, our chances of. Encountering unsafe situations are low, but just follow what I have experienced, what I have learned, but also the new rules that. Um, our tour director, our locals are even sharing with us.
I must tell you, Carson Lacan is my grandchild and he just loves you. He thinks you're just wonderful as far as a teacher. So.
Thank you.
You've been doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you. I enjoy Carson. I, I actually have been able to enjoy, well, I did enjoy his hockey games. I was not. I'll be honest, I wasn't a fan of hockey. I didn't care about hockey. I thought hockey was boring, but really. I think it changed because once you have students to watch, it's different.
Wonderful report.
Does the cost change if less than twenty students decide to go?
No, the cost has not changed that, um, with the four chaperones that I had showed. Per every five students, I get a free chaperone spot. So really that, that's my goal, up to twenty, so that I can have those chaperones. But. If parent, I'm sure parents are gonna say, count me in, I wanna register. So that really would, would help me out. Um, but ultimately the price, the price does not change. And once they, once they enroll, let's say they enroll May. And then someone wants to enroll in June, when the, after June fifteenth, when the trip cost increases. That it would be different. It would be different for them. So that's why it's important that. They get registered as soon as possible. Um, but like I said, my program consultant is more than willing to work with me to make this, um, a possibility.
Yeah, a quick question. The payments go directly to the company, not the school district? Is that handled correctly?
I, I don't handle them. It goes directly to them. Um, it's once a month. I know with my community trip, it is every fifth of the month. So the first, the first payment is fifty dollars. Fifty dollars to enroll and then after that, they get a month. Of no payment and then the next month, that is when their payment plan starts. So depending on the payment plan they choose, it's either ten months. Um, if it's debit or credit card or twelve months, if it's, um. Checking or savings, which in this case is gonna be double the amount of time. So that, that's another, uh, benefit of, if students sign up now. That means they have more time to have the lowest possible rate of payment plans.
How much does it cost for chaperones?
How much does it cost? Oh, I think this one I did not print. Um. I don't, I, oh, I did share it with you. The chaperones are free. So those, if, if I get those twenty students, I get four chaperones free. Um, but if a parent wants to go. The price is different because it, they are an adult. So anyone twenty-three or older is an adult. So anyone twenty-three or older is an adult. Here's the uh cost breakdown. So the tour fee, that is the tour fee, plus the folklore evening, which I'm adding as their last um activity. For being in Costa Rica, protection plan plus, um it's a hundred sixty-two dollars in total. And then the on-tour tipping, um as a group, we, we have to tip the, the bus drivers. Anyone who guides us through, through um Costa Rica. There is an early bird, that's what I was talking about, the two hundred dollar discount. Um the payment plan, the payment month, or the payment, monthly payments cost. But then the adult um is, is there anything more?
That can always just be presented later to Elsa.
It's that price, yep, yep, plus. Does.
The five are complimentary. That includes Elsa.
Yep, right. And the, the students, they will never be rooming in like the same gender room. Nope. It's, the company has that law of girls and boys. So it's either three students or four students. And then adults are completely away from, um they, they can't room with, within students. So adults would room together as adults and students as students.
Very well. Thanks for presenting that very thorough. Any further questions or comments from the board? If we have any, we can email you.
Absolutely, yep.
We're looking at action on this at the June regular meeting. Any, any questions or concerns that you want her to answer so to be in preparation for approval for the June meeting?
Eh, when in June? I'm sorry to interrupt.
The thirteenth of June.
Okay, I would not be in the country, June thirteenth. So could we do?
Well, we can do that. We just need to know if there's anything beforehand. We can approve it without you. I just need to know if there's anything she should answer prior to June thirteenth for the approval. So we don't delay the process that they have for the discounts and things like that. Any questions or concerns you have?
As far as the money part of it, kids have to bring quite a bit of extra money as far as souvenirs and things, basically.
Yeah, so that would be personal expenses. So what they would need um in Costa Rica would just be the things that they're wanting to buy. It would be out of their personal expenses. But otherwise, the meals are included, um which I think that's another factor that, that's really important. Thank you.
So I'll place on the agenda for approval at the June thirteenth board meeting. Is that? Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to number twelve, other items to discuss. And we have that addition of the solar project and some changes that we're gonna discuss.
I know uh Mr. Stevens also spoke to Jason Secora there. We have some, uh this Wyndham City Electrical Department and City Administrator. Have some concerns with the contract as written. I believe the uh Buildings and Grounds Committee was under the uh knowledge. That they had cleared that contract already and talked to um the city of Wyndham. I found out they had not fully vetted that contract with the city of Wyndham uh on that. So um we do not have to accept this grant. I wanna make sure that we're in a good position, that we don't sign off something and I walk out the door. And you guys remember that we approved uh similar to a Honeywell project. I wanna make sure that's okay with the board's blessing. I would talk to the state about holding that grant for us and maybe look at the second round of applications, which remember that was in August. And then shoot for the August timeline. Does that make sense? Would you mean uh spring install or summer install next year?
Yeah, I think under the circumstances of that, that's only wise to do that. In light of the new information and the, and the review of the contract.
Just for the record, I'd appreciate a motion by the board to direct the superintendent to delay that uh grant application to the August. Before we can so, sort this out.
I will move forward a motion to direct the superintendent's, whichever one it lands into, uh delay that until August.
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Barb on that. Uh any further discussion or questions? Seeing as there are none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same. That motion passes for number twelve. Okay, anything else or other items to discuss? Seeing as there are none, we will move on to number thirteen. This is going to be a closed session for the MSEA negotiation strategies per the MS thirteen D point oh three. Yes, uh Mr. Joyce, something else?
I'm just gonna point out that um our new, um newly elected middle school, high school assistant principal, Misty, is here. So if anybody wants to meet her quick, before you all go into closed session, she is here to greet everybody. So just wanted to offer that before the closed session.
Okay, uh we appreciate you coming to uh, to greet us at this meeting and afterwards, sure. Yes, we'll take a moment to say hello quickly and then we will go into the closed session. Thanks for the information, peace.
Need a motion.
I will move that um to go into closed session.
Motion by Barb, second by Don. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same. We will now take an action and move into a closed session.